He's not the only one, though.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
It's your first in-person council, Mr. Ronas.
Yep, all these first timers in the building meetings. Welcome back to those who haven't been here that you dress up very nicely. Thank you. It sounded pretty cool.
It was definitely planned.
Mr. Hoover is aware of what needs to take place. He presented the agenda, just in case you hadn't printed it. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we saved money by not having to please drop off the packets, which we used to.
Well, I got this dropped off. I got this dropped off.
Yeah. I didn't, but that's because I printed it.
Could you ask me not to?
I printed everything.
I was shocked that you didn't.
I ran out of ink and had to start over, so.
So Dave Exer said.
Yeah, it's like the dog had all his other truck bags.
What we'll do is, in our budget for 2022, is put ink cartridges for the home in our budgets.
We should have done that last year while we were working from home.
Last year, yeah, would have worked. So if there's any questions, Mr. Hoover has been, I have to say this, very forthright. If he gets a question, he doesn't know what to do with it. Either come to me or go to Mark, or he already knows who to go to. And so I've got to say thank you to him because he's really just stepped right in, and all the feedback's been very positive. So tonight, as I told him and others, you can't act distracted. You can't blank out your screen. You're on the whole time. So you've got to pay attention here. And with that, we're going to get right into the agenda. You did get, we're continuing the fact that they're pre-assigned, so that it just makes it easier. That way, you have to practice reading them, like the first one up. Mr. Garvis is pretty lengthy, with a lot of numbers. You know, it's like, sometimes it's like, what? And you don't, right after code, you don't have to say those symbols. How's that? Just second ones. Because is there an official title for those symbols, Mark?
Section.
There you go. Never knew that. So the first one up, we've heard back and forth, first reading, second reading. So this is, is this the mayor's or Joe's, or who would like to speak to it?
Okay. I can speak to it. It's the, it's a TIF ordinance for what we're calling the Big Carat TIF, which is the old Bedford anodizing plant site that was recently sold through the land bank. I'm believing on first reading, so I can send notice to the schools. And we can do all three for this over time.
So this is to have a TIF for whoever purchases it.
We have a buyer.
Have a buyer.
They bought it.
They bought it.
Or we'll have to say.
Industrial Realty Group is a developer, purchased the property through the land bank, which we partnered with, and they will have a local entity to help develop the parcels. And the impact of this ordinance, oversimplifying it by far, is to shave certain tax dollars that are normally collected and distributed to the county and others, and directed towards public improvements for the area.
How many parcels were included in that?
Just one.
That was quite two.
Two for this one.
There were two. And all the, I assume the county made sure everything's cleaned up that was supposed to be cleaned up?
Yes and no. There's some ongoing monitoring, but that's now up to the purchaser to complete those requirements and work with the US EPA and Ohio EPA to complete any remaining remediation. The nice thing about the city not purchasing it is we're not in the chain of title, so we have no round field, circle type liability.
Can you real quickly give a brief history? Because some of these, we're not members of council. This has been years. It's actually the mayor co-federated. It's been on the plate for a long time.
So in or around 2011, there was a Bedford anodizing company operating in aluminum anodizing plant. There was a blockage in one of the filtration systems which caused an overflow of contaminants, contaminated water that's not filtered to run into a nearby stream. EPA was immediately notified of the issue. They sent out a START team, which is like an environmental SWAT team essentially, to do some emergency cleanup. Total, I think it was somewhere around $1.1 million. They subsequently tried to recoup that money through a EPA prosecution by the federal government. That was unsuccessful. The former owner was essentially bankrupt. That took quite a while to complete, for them to make a determination that they really couldn't recover their lost remediation funding. We then were able to secure it through the forfeiture process and kind of hold that property until we were able to sort out what type of additional remediation needed to occur. Found a buyer, and now we're at where we're at today.
There's been a lot of discussion about what to do with that property. We had a couple of proposals, but then it uncovered EPA stuff, which kind of everybody went, never mind. Did that flow into like, the little?
The retention pond, routing?
Not that I know of.
Because the property had buttered then, so. Buttering up that went into that. Everybody knows.
Not that I know of.
Right when it came at the last minute.
I think the waterway that goes through there ends in that retention pond.
Everything was connected, right?
Haven't seen any fishing lately, so.
Do you go down there a lot?
I drive by it a lot, and I run there.
The important thing to note for residents, well, one, this is generally a commercial area, but two, when the START team came in, they took out truckloads and truckloads of contaminated soil. So I mean, honestly, most of the contamination was eliminated right away, which was obviously good for the environment and everybody else in the city.
And if you haven't been there, my recommendation, just take a ride down the street, see where the property is. It's not one that you wouldn't want to.
Like on that street.
You wouldn't have wanted to, you know, because it was a business. So, and you can't see the retention basin from the road. You can only see it from up there. So it's interesting. So this is a TIF for this group that's coming in. But real quick, explain what a TIF does, because I'm not sure we passed a TIF in two years.
We've done a claim.
I just want to make sure everybody's good with that.
We've done a handful.
Are you guys good with it?
Mark, does Dave have to amend the whereas that has a blank?
Not yet. Mr. Harris is going to be sending out the statutory notices to the schools, and we'll get either a waiver from them or an objection from them. They won't come back and amend it.
I'm sorry, this is Jeff, so we just do first reading. Don't need a second or first reading, but when we get to that point, it's. I have to admit, I've never seen such canned faces. I could tell what you guys were all doing.
Yard work.
You got it.
It's been raining and sun. We've been mowing twice a week.
We were in the Smoky Mountain, and I forgot to put sunscreen on.
Any questions on this, ladies and gentlemen? Now we'll move on to number 40, which is Jessica. This is to add an accounts payable administrator. Is this person working in both departments? HR and accounts payable?
No. This is really just to add a part-time position for finance.
Hey, I have a question on that. Didn't we have a part-time person before that has left us? And we still have to redo this position?
So when that legislation request came in, it was just for that person and created the position with that pointing ordinance? So there was not a regular position created. It was like a special position essentially. So this is creating that position for this year. If this individual should leave, the position will still be here to be built in the non-unity ordinance.
Thank you.
And the rate of pay is at three. Part-time, what do you talk about with part-time? What are your hours? How many hours?
This position is typically, what I'm going to use it for is summer intern and winter break for young student and potentially young college student as well. Give them some opportunity to gain interest in accounting, finance, if they want it.
So are they basically just covering the summer and the break?
Yeah. Summer's a good time to have part-time help because of all the additional work we have to do for the Macedonia refund program for the contempt.
Questions? If everyone's in agreement, I'm going to do one, two, three. And then do you have someone, are you going to put the job ad out, or do you already have someone?
We have someone. That's why this came up. When we went to go pay this person, it was revealed that the part-time position was just named.
That's why it's an emergency, not yet the effective.
Yeah, but that seems to be an emergency.
So it needs to be three.
I would recommend.
That's, we're going to do one, two, three.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think something, we're going to know that I can add too, that when John took over the department, we had five, five and a half employees, and now we're operating on three and a half. So we are obviously working a lot more with a lot of supplemental pieces that should be identified as well.
Three and a half, including this intern?
Yes.
I would look at it as three and a quarter. Because it's only a summer month.
Quarter of the year, yeah.
He can get mayor around, but yeah, he likes to run.
Next one up is 41. This will be Mr. Benjares. Mayor or Joe?
Mr. Voladie, can I speak to this one? This is an I O. Earlier this spring, we had legislation to authorize a bid for this project. So this legislation is to award the contract for the work to Northeast Ohio Trenching Services. As you may remember from our meeting earlier this spring, this is to correct a drainage problem on Baylee Road that the city's been dealing with for quite some time now. We have an excessive amount of standing water in the ditches. It never drains, so we're going to install a storm sewer system, catch basins and storm sewer pipes, get the area to drain properly. We'll also take this opportunity to shore up some of the ditches out there. They're extremely deep. They're dangerous to the drainage public, quite honestly. So we take this opportunity to regrade those, make it a little safer for our motorists. And it's fully reimbursed, the entire project, from our NERS account. And we would ask for a one, two, three to see things we can proceed.
Is this both sides of the street?
Would mostly be on the east side of the street.
Okay, the side towards 20.
But it would also improve drainage on the west side of the road.
The only reason being, the west side's where the development's going?
Correct, yeah.
And it's like, do we fix it now, or do we wait till the development's?
This is a little bit south of that proposed development.
It'll have an impact. So when we do this, are we having assurance that it will be able to handle all those homes that are going to go in?
That's correct. And those homes would be draining in the opposite direction to their own new detention pond that they'd be requiring to build. So they'd be independent.
When do you anticipate this will start?
This fall.
And you'll be sure to publicize and put that road as heavily trialed. And that by Paul does some I, who decided, oh, I'm not allowed to go the rest of the way into Macedonia? So he decided that corner to tie it up for two minutes as he figured out how to turn around and go back south, so there were like, what the heck? I was very impressed. He just missed the telephone. But I was real impressed that he was able to turn that semi around.
And not fall in that ditch.
Yeah, but, and I.
Or in the Barker's yard.
You know, I think Hudson allows semis. I wasn't certain. But we may want to move, he knows semis early to actually where the border is, because the signs add the intersection. And we actually start further south. It was interesting to say the words.
Do we have a feel for how long that project's going to take?
Not yet. After we award the contract, we'll get a work schedule from the contractor. We'll let everyone know. But it's a relatively short duration.
That's right, you're back there.
Hopefully we don't.
Good question.
We'll make sure we get you all the details.
Before the snow flies. Okay. Or we're going to go out. Okay, one, two, three, unless I hear something different. Okay, Mr. Benjares, that's yours. No amendments required. Mr. Finley, you're the second. Next up is the resolution confirming, Mr., I'm going to say his name, Wallenhorst?
Correct.
To the city, to the planning commission. I gave this to Jeff because he used to be on there. Right, Dave? So I thought it'd be, or to Dave, I'm sorry. I thought it'd be appropriate, since you missed that position.
Really?
Yeah. Questions?
Now, this guy looks very, very good for the position, very good fit by the volunteer board.
Now, he used to work for GPD, who used to be our people, which is pretty cool. When is this effective immediately?
Immediately.
For the next meeting?
It'll be effective the day of the ordinance.
Who's left the position? Who opened up the position by new?
This was from Mr. Volada, who resigned. Cap Volada was on there for, God, I'd better say it, 20 years, if not more.
Wow. And he doesn't work at GPD anymore? That was the previous employment?
I believe so.
Because Westbrook's works for GPD also.
Yes, he does.
Because if one has to abstain, and primarily the other one would too.
Don't believe people.
No, I think it was his prior employment.
Everyone received the resume? Thank you for that question of requesting it. Helps alleviate concerns. Questions? This is yours. If you have anybody with no better, I observed them, but I haven't had them on that long. Okay, if not, we'll do one, two, three. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to number 43. Please ignore the clock. It's stopped. We will be putting a battery in that. It's quarter to two. Bar's closing shortly. We better hurry up here.
Get it under the jacket.
That's why I have my phone on, and it's 7:02. Okay. Number 43, I'm taking with Dave as the second. This is Mr. Radic. I've already had some dealings with him. Any questions, or do you want to speak to it?
I'd be happy to. You guys may be aware that Nino Monaco had taken some time off to deal with some personal things and was unable to come back. The big thing about this and Mr. Radic is getting someone that actually has the certifications to be a certified building official is very, very rare. And a lot of people are hunting guys like him now. And he has been here before. The time that he's been working as the interim, he's done an excellent job. Any dealings, I have heard nothing negative from anyone. And I can tell you, he lives right next door, so he's here. I had to call him on July 4th, and he went out immediately to a problem that was in town and took care of it. So I think he's an excellent fit for it. He knows the job inside out, has done it for many, many years. He's a great member of our team, so I would appreciate it if we could have him this evening.
Awesome.
Two times. I've also had questions from Mr. Radic, and I have always gotten answers back in a timely manner.
Great.
Yeah, I've been working with him and Chris, Mr. Hall. They're the tag team. Right?
I look forward to seeing them joining us officially at that. Sounds great.
And it's adopted, it's effective upon signature, so ASAP. No questions? But now we'll make the one, two, three. We have now entered the twilight zone. The clock is gone. It's like being at Disney World. Okay. Next up is expenses. Mr. Harris is the lead on this one, says it's the budget. You got pages and memorandos and colored pages. Blue, green, pink, yellow, I don't know what that's pink. Flush color, a little bit of everything, so take it away.
Thank you. Jan, hear that? So.
Jan.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Cap. Okay, Cap.
The Technology Advancement Fund, we're adding 30,000 to transfer in for the project of updating our website. It wasn't anticipated, but for this year, I think we had a slight connection, but we moved that up on the calendar.
And if I can add, if you guys have visited our website.
Oh, I've been waiting for this for three years, so let's do it.
And this is sorely needed for communication purposes to the public, because we get a lot of complaints about it.
Can I just ask a question? I don't know if the cops here.
He's in a.
Kyle's in a hole.
He's in a hobbit hole.
Are we like, completely like, started on the track?
Yeah. He's using a platform, he's choosing the platform.
Something other than work.
Yeah, it's a municipal website or platform. People that.
Content manager.
Yeah, for just for service.
I didn't mean to pull you out of the room.
It's no problem. I got five books from companies that specialize in specifically government focused websites. I got together a small group of employees here, had them review some samples, so it was just really my opinion. Counselperson Brand also, obviously, was part of that group and was very helpful. So I'm just looking forward to selecting one of them to move forward.
That's good to hear. I was just concerned that we were going to invest in improving the one.
No, no, no. No, it's not going to be WordPress-based. It's going to, we're going to go with an in-house that specializes, and they make their own custom content management software, as well as they will be hosting it as well, 24/7, uptime and everything. So we're going to take all our small X, just put them in one basket. That's our plan, so.
Thank you. I didn't mean to pull you out of the room.
Oh, no, you're fine.
He got dressed up, does that? So that's good.
I was going to say, any other questions perking before you?
Yeah, let's take this down.
Oh, the camera's gone, so I don't know. Oh, got moved over there.
Oh, great.
Do we still have a way to turn that off when we go to executive?
Kyle turns it off.
At least don't plug it.
Yeah. Don't touch it. Kyle says, don't touch it. He turns it off. He has no interest in breaking any laws.
What else?
Family Rec Center, we're adding a grant we received from NOPEC to do lighting, upgrade the lighting there to LED, a lot of the light. 75,000 for transfer in. Water M&amp;E, we're adding 25,000 to estimated revenue. Happy to say that revenue's up, I think, because of all the.
With all the awesome work you did. The charge, huh?
All the payments are coming in.
Getting that automated.
Without a help, so. Any man-hours needed, so. Road program, we added 21,000 for NERS, the cost share grant project. So the expense will be increased to 21,000 as well. So it's a wash to us, thanks to the community cost share grant. On the appropriations side, transfers out were increased for number one and two above. And I decided to add dental and vision, just to be paid out of our administrative support section, like workers' comp is. I mean, the dollar amounts are so small. We were dividing up, you know, a thousand-dollar bill 14 ways opposed to different departments. So this will greatly increase the efficiency of processing those bills and the vision as well. Retirement reserve, we had three retirements so far this year from longstanding employees. Andrea in my office, Greg Nichols in police. I'm sorry, Glenn. Oh, Glenn. What did I say? Oh, I had a Latin, I said, okay, Glenn. I had two N's, actually. Nichols and Chip Davis. So that's unusual, that many in one year, so I had to increase. I'm not going to use all of the 50, but it's nice. I rounded up.
I made one misstatement.
It's a nice round number.
I'm not hurting you, but for days. This is recent, and one little error.
Yesterday. Our first in-person staff meeting, so. Technology advancement, we talked about Parks and Rec with Jason as the new director. And having to look more at the supplies and repairs and maintenance because Bill had left. So new eyes, new thoughts. We're adding some money to make improvements that aren't capital, but they definitely help aesthetics. Family Rec Center, well, I'm sorry, that's Parks and Rec, which Jason's going to take over the outside. And then Family Rec Center, same kind of thing. And we added 30,000 for the LED expense grant. Parks and Rec Trust is the window legs across the street. Added 7,000 for utilities.
What does that mean, to pay for utilities on the property?
Yes.
As landlords?
Yes. Water M&amp;E, 70,000 for the first year of a plant capital. VAC machine and 30,000 for a tractor. Okay, boom.
It's a retractable. We're currently using a piece of equipment that's not meant for that capability. We found with another city that this is normally a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. They've had it for, I think, five years?
Yep.
And we're getting it for 30, but it gives them the ability to lift the boom, but their trimming just decides, the saw blades, or whatever you want to call them, go up, down. I mean, it's a versatile piece of equipment, so we'll stop using the equipment that's not meant for the purpose.
For mowing hills?
Ditches.
Ditches, or even brush on the side of the road. It's, you know, breaks.
Kind of like roadside mowing, stay rowdy in similar areas. Somebody was saying, snowplows hit it, have to move over because the brush is coming. So that'll help keep snowplows to the right.
Is this VAC machine, is this a leaf vac, or is this for cleaning out ditches, under?
It could be for a lot of different things, but primarily like haulers, they have pulled it up. You could stick the back in there and.
Is this something we're replacing? Do we already have one? Or no? Is this something that we hire out?
We've been contracting these out, realized, and I think we had this in the plan anyway, but it was something that we realized we needed more often than not.
We bought four pills a month. Four pill.
And you realize they're here?
Yep, they have one.
I believe they have one.
The one on Shepherd Hills.
Yeah.
They're, the whole thing is.
But we saw, we had a call in for that one.
So they came and had to suck it out because it was all stuck in there and drawing down to the next one. And it was just, wow, all over the place. It was pretty gross.
That's a great investment, I think, for us, with all the problems we have.
It is not Cleveland Water with their hose.
Okay, capital improvements, I think Jessica would be happy to hear this, and I believe all the rest of council too. The mayor and I were talking, and he really wants to concentrate on trail improvements. In Glen Willow, we were able to get, you know, a couple different trail grants. So I had Joe talk to his partner, who is the engineer in Glen Willow, and Joe's going through the process of putting a plan together. I think they walked the trails the other day. And so hopefully, with the plan in place, and, you know, more, you see more and more communities, you know, Ohio wants people to get out.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of grants available, so.
Did I hear something with number four?
Oh, sorry, I skipped right over there. Thank you for pointing that out, didn't it? 10,000 for community safety cameras, right up your alley. So. Where are your cameras?
It's on the street.
And 20,000 for a tow motor. When the mayor was taking, I call him Eli, but Steve Zarnick around.
You call him, I don't.
Yeah.
Continue, he has a nickname for her.
Sounds about right, Toby.
There's 34 of my own nicknames, so.
Yeah.
Feel free to add.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to speak to. If you want to speak to the tow motor need.
The tow motor that we have currently, I believe, is a nineteen fifty-four model. It's really seen its useful life. We've had a lot of problems with the breaking down. Obviously, with the newer piece of equipment, it's a lot more efficient and safe, which is the big piece, because it's very dangerous. It's at the point where it's tight. We really need to make a move to give them a safe piece of equipment. And we use it more often than you would. A lot of deliveries come in that we need to get off the trucks that that thing moves at a snail's pace and wheels have fallen off of it. It's very heavy.
From nineteen fifty-four.
I'm exaggerating at the date, I'm not quite sure, but if you looked at it, you would think it's awfully old.
It's rounding down.
Yeah. And the chief's gonna speak, police chief's gonna speak to the cameras too in his.
His report.
Report, so.
The camera, are there clocking things? Someone just had a battery in their pocket. Man, check.
Actually reduced the service department capital by ten thousand. Reviewing it with a fine-toothed comb. Road program, added fifty-six thousand for the right-in, right-out monument sign project. We had to reject the first bids. I don't know if any of you have looked at the price of materials for construction these days, but they've skyrocketed, so hopefully we won't need all of this. And overall, if it came in at the bid that it came in at last time, we'd still be under our projections for what we presented before I was here, but it was on council's agenda, the total potential project cost for those parcel owners.
Yeah, the second, the first time it was bid, no bidders responded. The second time it was bid, one bid responded, it was well in excess of the threshold, so mandatory that be projected. We're working on adjusting the design currently. We had a meeting with the architect and he's realizing this week, he actually, he's doing some redesign, which will lower the cost a little bit, actually make the design more functional and potentially provide a little bit of additional sign area for the tenants and property owners. We're hoping that will bring it in well within, well below what Mr. Vares has allocated.
So we haven't accepted a bid yet.
Correct.
Which is putting the money aside. Once the bids accepted, when would they begin the project?
Much like the Valley View drainage, it'll be a meeting with the contractor once it's awarded to determine the schedule. Obviously, we want to get it done as soon as possible, because we still have to go and do the final special assessment, assessing ordinance to complete the process.
So we're looking at this year? Or spring?
Promise, that's Mark.
I couldn't guess.
Get the honest, probably spring.
I would guess, yeah.
Because I guess more people are using that.
I think spring is safe, but it is, to Mark's point, it's in the best interest of the city to push this along in an expedient manner, because, you know, we need to finalize the assessment and close that process.
Well, more people are using that entrance and exit, but a lot of people said, why? What entrance and exit? I told Greg, I said, instead of going through the whole target, turn left here and we go right over to Chip Paul, and Chip Paul, and he's like.
He calls for his entrance.
And then that also takes in the plans for whatever, because that property is still for sale. If someone buys a property to build, it's built outside their limitation, correct?
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
There is.
Within the right of way.
Okay, thank you.
And then one last thing. Joe is going to, I'm probably stealing a little bit of your report, but.
Deal.
We were awarded money for the Highland Road resurfacing phase two, so four hundred and fifteen thousand and some change. So that pushed up the design work. That's why that's part of the increase for engineering. The Highland Valley View intersection timetable has started. Again, a little bit of design work this year. Empire Parkway, we have a transportation improvement district grant that we're receiving, and we were kind of waiting to see what would happen at the end of the street. That's happening now, so we have to get that, those plans going as well. And then, Gentina, you'll be happy to see that the pavement condition report, PCR rating, is going to be updated.
Yeah, we've been talking.
So with all those changes, I had to amend the engineering, you know, estimates.
Highland Road resurfacing at the intersection this year?
So.
I only say that intersection.
Cat's out of the bag, so I guess we'll talk about it now for a moment instead of.
Well, the surprise.
On the floor, it's, well, it's already been ruined, so. So, a long story short, city's awarded a grant from Ohio Public Works Commission, O P W C, to resurface Highland Road from Valley View Road east to Chamberlain Road, which is our border with Twinsburg Township. Like John mentioned, the grant is for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which represents fifty-three percent of the total project cost to resurface that road. It's a long stretch of road, it's three lanes, if you guys are familiar. It's in bad shape, needs to be resurfaced. Some of you may recall, the residents used to refer to it as Thunder Alley. I haven't heard that term in a while, but I don't want to hear it again.
It is semi.
And there's a lot of semi, and that was, I think, part of the reason why they called it Thunder Alley.
In the morning, it is just, now, this is at seven-thirty, and it's just bumper to bumper. And then at two, I come back, it's bumper to bumper. It's a scary intersection. At some point, we're gonna have to resurrect what we do at that intersection, since we can't do the roundabout, something's gotta be, either we gotta widen and put in turn lanes that are real turn lanes.
But we're getting them.
It's ugly.
Remember, it's in the budget for twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five, correct.
That's the, yeah, the Highland Valley.
They want to try to hit a little girlie.
Well, they're paying, they're paying, I'm with you.
It's unreal how the traffic has gotten.
Is the timeline driven by the.
They go five years out.
Right, okay.
Yeah, they're federal dollars, they're going to receive from the intersection, that's federal dollars. To the mayor's point, they program it years out, so our dollars are programmed for two thousand and twenty-five.
Gotcha.
Cheryl, if you had to round the four fifteen, what would you round it to?
Four and a quarter.
Just to say five hundred.
So do me a favor, don't do the water project on Valley View at the same time that we're doing the.
Resurf.
Resurfacing on Highland.
Have fun, Dave. I wanted to get on. I'll never get here.
Well, we had that Burt's List project too, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's an interesting road, isn't it? It's a busy, busy, busy.
When is the resurfacing?
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get to that. It's planned for two thousand and twenty-two.
Next year. After the snowflows.
After the snow, no.
So that's it for forty-four.
Is Twinsburg gonna take care of their site? Do we go to Chamberlain or we only go?
We go all the way to Chamberlain. A small portion of the site actually falls within Twinsburg Township, so they'll be financially responsible for the portion that falls.
The township.
Correct.
Okay, have we spoken to them?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, correct.
Questions?
One, two, three, also.
Well, do we have any other questions? Oh, man. All right, now, Mr. Garvis.
For a second, sir.
Yeah, unless someone says. We can always both know, but in here, we can agree what we're gonna offer for, we vote on the board. It's not me and David. Okay, last but definitely not least, she is number forty-five.
Okay, this is a fund that we're creating to receive our first distribution, first of two. The second one will be no sooner than twelve months after we receive the first of the American Rescue Plan, our act. The total is six hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents. So about a six hundred fifty thousand.
Six twenty-nine. Nice draw.
And we're going to set this money aside to go towards a new service garage.
With this money, do we have to reply back to the federal government?
Yes.
House being used in any time? Is it on a certain time basis?
We have, I think, until twenty twenty-five to use.
But do you have to give in reports of?
Well, we get audited annually, so anything over five hundred thousand creates a federal single audit, as they call it. So until we start spending, we'll just have to show them we're holding the dollars. And I've heard on a couple different video Zoom calls, that the interest, we're allowed to earn interest on this money.
So basically, the money's a bank.
The point zero zero one percent that we can get.
Don't spend it for three years, but every year you have to tell them, yes, we have it.
Yes.
Hasman spent, there's so much interest.
Right. And the main theme behind the RACT is infrastructure improvements for communities, so it kind of fits well with the.
Nice. Thank you all, come on to your tax dollars.
I can dig it.
Yeah, you pay for it, so.
This specific ordinance simply creates the fund and promises how you're gonna spend money for a program.
Well, it makes sense and logically, believe they have a separate fund.
Yeah.
So that there's no question.
Yeah, they didn't require, but they recommend.
Haven't we already created funds or are those from Ohio?
Those for the coronavirus from last year. Different act, the care act.
Those corons?
Yes.
Is this one, two, three?
Jelcicle?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think we're gonna be getting the money.
No man.
We're getting it within ten days of July fifteenth, so.
This is basically housekeeping. And then, when we review the budget, it'll be included in the budget, correct?
Yeah.
It'll be on the.
Yeah.
And did you already make a line item number?
I don't think I did, because I've amended.
Will you highlight it in special color?
Yes, for sure. Green.
Create a new color?
One more piece, if I may, real quick. We do have a proclamation for Chip Davis that I was gonna inject after the approval of the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be in the next, I think.
For thirty-nine years of service, you guys would not buy the.
Bring your chip a couple minutes, Charles.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, so it'll be before public comments.
Oh, yeah.
It is officially seven twenty-seven, that's pretty good. Thank you.
They're trash man.
Hello and welcome to the July twenty-second council meeting. It's been a long time, and I know everyone's very anxious and happy to be back in person, so welcome. It is seven thirty-three PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here. Now, I ask Mr. O'Brien to give us our invocation.
Your honor, thank you. With bowheads, let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mankind and judge over nations, we pray to thee to guide our meeting in this work. As we enter into the dark days of summer, let our citizens be ever cautious with the pandemic's Delta variants. Let us pray for those who serve the people and guard the public welfare, that by thy blessing, they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray for our leaders, that by thy help, they may observe the strictest justice, keep alive the fires of freedom, and strive earnestly for the spirit of democracy and preserve our townies, our loyalty to our country and to thee. Oh, God, oh mercy, we ask thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen. And now, face the plague and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the plague of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, and welcome back. Very nice to see you.
Good to see you, your honor.
Okay, next on our agenda will be the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk for that we approved the minutes as submitted by the Department of Council for Thursday, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, for the council meeting, and for the state, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, special prosecutor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, next up, we're gonna have a proclamation for Mr. Chip Davis. I'll ask you to come up in front with me, please.
It's brought from the office of the mayor, where as we honor today Lieutenant Chip Davis after thirty-nine years of dedication to public service, and wish to extend our sincere appreciation for his outstanding performance of duty and distinct leadership during his tenure. And whereas the Macedonia Fire Department is losing an absolute wealth of knowledge and experience, Chip had continually demonstrated a high level of skill, aptitude, and commitment. And Chip has always been a friend, a firefighter, medic, a fire officer, and a accountant. And whereas Chip started with the fire department on January first, nineteen eighty-five, yes, I said nineteen eighty-five, Schultz. And some of that was assisted with the service department on a wintry day, snow plowing and continuing to serve both the service and fire department until August of nineteen ninety, when he resigned from the service department to focus on a fire service. And whereas Chip graduated from Akron General's paramedic program in nineteen ninety-one, and was hired full-time by the city fire department in June nineteen ninety-three as a firefighter and paramedic. Chip was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on August twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-eight, and also served as fire department representative on the building field. And to this day, he is still the individual that people seek out to have a building question answered. And whereas we wish Lieutenant Davis and his entire family the very best going forward in his life as he spends more time with his children, relishing himself. Now therefore, I, Nicole, our mayor of the city of Macedonia, Ohio, have here unto, set my hand on this twenty-second day in our year of reward, two thousand and twenty-one, and hereby do proclaim this day for Lieutenant Chip Davis Day.
I'm not gonna let you away that easy. A few things I want to say about Chip is, this guy can fill with a picture for anything. He's kind of a guru when it comes to mechanics. Y'all may know we have that old fire truck in the back, and he worked very, very hard to get that thing up and running for Memorial Day Parade, so much so I looked out the window here and I saw him sipping around it, and I'm going, I don't like, what is going on? So he got that thing running, and I'm sure the parts were not easy to come by, I gotta applaud your efforts with that, but more so, the thirty-nine years of service is amazing, and we're gonna miss you, but I know you're still gonna be around, because on his first day off from being here, he was back here in the twenty, I went, Chip. Your first day, so I know he's not gonna leave us, I know he'll be around, and we love you, but I'll turn it over to the chief to make a few comments, because I know he has a few things he'd like to say, and that was your turn.
Well, what the mayor says is all correct. I was here when Chip started, and he spent a lot of time in the service department. He and former retired chief Black, he used to work night shift in the service department plowing the roads. They had a lot of fun, and they answered calls in those same plow trucks that they plowed the streets in. And we used to answer calls from home, Chip would respond to calls with a semi with an excavator on the back of it. He would park it in the city hall parking lot. The police department would complain because he's blocking cruisers because he had to get on that squad. This building, in reference, in the proclamation talks about Chip was on the building committee, was for this building. He attended every meeting. Then he went a little further. When the contract was let out for this building, they did not include any wiring for computers, because it was nineteen ninety-six, were you really gonna be around that long? We all know that. And no telephone system. So Chip and some other guys actually wired this entire building with all the data and phone lines that are still used today. Kyle wants to replace them all, okay, because they're twenty-six years old, twenty-seven years old. Kyle wants to replace them all, okay, because they're 26 years old, 27 years old. But he did all that. He was paid. But he knows this building inside and out. To this day, he can rattle off anything you want to know about this building, and he is going to be sorely missed from that aspect alone. Chip was always a leader. You always knew where you stood with Chip. You still know where you stand with Chip. And he doesn't really care what you think of him. He's going to do what he thinks is right. Sometimes it's loud, but for Chip, it works. And he is going to be sorely missed by all these gentlemen and the dozens that are not here tonight. So congratulations. We are going to miss you. And do not be a stranger. And stop by anytime.
Thank you.
It's been a great ride. I learned early in my career by mistake, you never put the chief and the mayor on six block views. Keep that happening, and you can make a wonderful career out of this place. Have the love of my family. Those guys in blue back there, ladies and men, are my family. And all the people sitting out here, should be out here, are my bosses. Every tree, every residence, like they're my boss and keep the mayor on six block views. Have a great job. Learn, listen.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your backwards. Thank you, sir. Okay, next up on our agenda will be public comments. We have one person signed in. We ask you to come to the podium, give your name and address. You are limited to five minutes or less. The chief Golden will start the timer. I appreciate it. And the only person we have today is Deb McColsky.
My name is Deb McColsky, and I live at 142 May Avenue in Northfield. Good evening, everyone. I am the new president of Longwood Manor Historical Society, and as their spokesperson, I would like to say thank you for the monetary gift to the Manor House. It is greatly appreciated. As a member and volunteer for the last over 13 years, it is the most encouragement we have had thus far with help from the city to preserve the history of the first mayor of Macedonia, Colonel William Frulong. We are able to continue to preserve the home for the residents of Macedonia and Nordonia Hills area as many community events. It is quoted that the former mayor of Northfield Village, Arch Malani, after the Colonel's death, said, quote, "Was the greatest savior of Macedonia," end quote. Now we at LMHS feel the same with the city and the parks and recreation now hearing our voices and understanding that we can work together to use this beautiful Tudor home unusual to this area. We are planning some events such as the possible antique car and fire truck show for the fire department's 100th anniversary on the grounds of the Manor House. A Christmas craft show, a mother-daughter tea in springtime, small weddings, graduations or showers, a band concert with a summer picnic. It would be the Highland Band have asked to use our facilities, and we would like to have a summer picnic with old-fashioned games and people could, you know, will get a truck from Hondals and have ice cream sundaes and things for purchase then. Since we are working with Jason Chadock, the seasonal programs he has in mind may also involve the Manor House and the Summer Macedonia Camp Program has also used the facilities this summer. Once the first floor is completed, we hope to be able to have open houses once a month, starting in August or September of this year. We will continue to inform the council of our progress and how the funds are being utilized. Mayor Long once said that, quote, "Industry is the sole creator of real wealth in any community. Macedonia is no exception." As industry prospers, so do the men engaged in the commerce of the community and in rendering professional and other services to its people. As payrolls and profits increase, everyone shares directly or indirectly in the benefits, end quote. I feel as we are working together, we are honoring his memory and gift to the community of the beautiful park facilities and his historic home. Now we can show people familiar and unfamiliar with him and his legacy, the historic significance and extraordinary home. It is a gem for the community. We were asked by Mayor Molnar to give the council our consensus vote as to the existence of the barns. I have a formal letter, and if I might be able to read that to the community. July 21st, 2021, to the honorable Mayor Nick Molnar and members of the Macedonia City Council. The Longwood Manor Historical Society, LMHS, held a special meeting on July 20th, 2021, to form a consensus of opinion concerning the barns on the property of Longwood Manor. The members had voted that we would like to see both barns remain due to their historical value and significance relating to the history of the city of Macedonia. The vote was nine, four, and four against. So nine people decided both barns. The other four wanted the one barn to stay. A subcommittee of the LMHS for the barns is being organized. The goal of this committee was discussed. Tasks to be considered for the committee include, but are not limited to, develop a five-year strategic plan for the barns, cost analysis of what is needed to preserve, restore, and maintain the barns, decide how to obtain necessary funding to secure volunteer workforce, to secure, obtain appropriate skilled licensed contractors as needed, recommended future appropriate use of buildings. And then Macedonia resident and LMH member John Casmer was asked to chair this committee. He accepted the position and stated he will be recruiting volunteers to assist him. The LMHS looks forward to working with the city to maintain this integral part of the legacy of Colonel William Frulong. Sincerely, Deb McColsky, President of LMH Manor. And I would like to again say thank you very much, and we appreciate that we're working together, and that's what the Colonel left this home for, was for the community. And the community will be given this back, and we will be able to share it all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next up is correspondence from the clerk.
No correspondence.
Then we'll move right into pending a new legislation, starting with ordinance number 39.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 39, 2021, for its first reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, and establishing a big carrot municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40, 5709.42, and 5709.43.
Thank you. Ordinance 40.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 40, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance amending Section 1 of ordinance 4-2021, which established the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia effective January 1st, 2021.
Director Cadetti, and/or Director Verris, explanation?
Quite simply, unless Mr. Verris wants to add to this, this is creating a position and enabling the city to pay a part-time new position within the city's finance department. And I understand that's going to be for approximately three months a year.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I propose that we pass and post ordinance number 40, 2021, according to law.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance number 40 carries. Ordinance number 41.
Mayor, I move to offer ordinance number 41, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Northeast Ohio Trenching Services, Inc. for the Valley View Road Drainage Improvement Project.
Director Jalati.
Thanks, Mayor. As discussed in the work session, this piece of legislation is toward the contract to Northeast Ohio Trenching Services. This is to correct a longstanding drainage issue the city's been dealing with on Valley View Road south of Twinsburg Road. Excessive water in the ditches doesn't drain. So we'll install a proper storm sewer system with storm sewer pipes and catch basins. Also, we'll correct some of the deep, dangerous ditches in this area to make them safer for the traveling public. And the project is fully reimbursed from any RSD community cost share account. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 41, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance 41 carries. Resolution number 42.
I move to offer resolution number 42, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Scott D. Wallenhurst to the City of Macedonia Planning Commission.
So Mr. Wallenhurst put his application in with a resume. He is very qualified. He's an architect, a lot of years of experience in what he's doing, so that's why it's brought forward today. Any further discussion? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number 42, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Resolution 42 carries. Ordinance number 43.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 43, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Robert Rodek to the position of City of Macedonia Building Commissioner.
So Mr. Rodek has filled in for us, I found out today, twice in the past. Nino Monaco was our building commissioner, and he had to leave for some personal reasons. Mr. Rodek has filled that role up until this point. He does an excellent job at it, as we spoke about in our caucus. These gentlemen or ladies that do this type of work are very hard to come by. The certifications to get that and qualifications to get that are very stringent. And it's very rare to have someone with that talent and that ability to be working for us, so I can't thank Mr. Rodek enough. And I think that you're going to be a great fit as long as we get this passed here, so thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 43, 2021, please.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Sigh of relief, Mr. Rodek. I don't know if that's me, but we're trying to, we're working on a lot of technological issues today, so bear with us, please. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 44.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I'd like to offer ordinance number 44, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 74, 2020, relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Director Verris.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this in caucus, but I'll touch on some of the highlights. We're adding $30,000 to the Technology Advancement Fund to improve our website, city website. We're adding $26,300 of NOPEC grant money for the project, LED lighting project at the Family Rec Center. Let's see. We are adding $70,000 to the Water M&amp;E Fund for a first year of planned capital to purchase a VAC machine to help with the maintenance of the ditches in the city, and $30,000 for a tractor with a boom mower to do the same. We are adding some money for community safety cameras, which Police Chief Golden will talk about in his report. Adding $80,000 to $20,000, we already set aside this year for trail improvements. And it'll be part of a comprehensive plan that our engineer is going to be putting together to be able to submit for grant money for trail improvements. And that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 44, 2021.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully. Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance 44 carries. Ordinance number 45.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 45, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing and regulating the local fiscal recovery fund, fund number 266, to be used to track receipts and expenditures conserving the American Rescue Plan, ARP Act, and confirming the expenditure of ARP Act funds to be consistent with the ARP Act.
Director Verris.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a fund that we're creating. It was recommended that we create it. It's not not required that we do, but it makes it a lot easier because of the dollar amount that we're receiving. We're receiving $628,506.36. If I was the federal government, I would round, but I don't know why they're passing out money in cents, but it doesn't make any sense to me. It's here, and now it makes sense. So we are going to be receiving this money probably by the end of the month because the email I received on the 15th says we should get it within 10 days, business days. And this money is going to be set aside for a future service charge.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 45, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance 45 carries. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I will go into the mayor's report. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome Mr. Rodek to our team as an official member now. Thank you. We look forward to working with you and glad to have that part done, so much work to do and continue on as you have, so thank you again. A second thing I want to touch on is IHOP had been approved, conditionally improved, to come into Macedonia this week in the old Pizza Hut building. I have to say this periodically because I think it's important, but we do not choose who goes into our buildings. If they meet the zoning requirements, they can come in and do anything they would like to do as long as they're within zoning. I have reached out to other entities. I do hear people. I hear you when you say you want different types of food. I hear you when you say you want healthier foods. I hear you when you say you want a steakhouse. Believe me, I spent a lot of time hauling these different entities and in some cases, almost begging them to come to our community. I have not been successful in doing that. It's obviously a huge, huge investment to get someone to come into our community and come into a building and hope to be successful. And there's a lot of market research that goes into that. Not to say that I haven't tried because I have. So before you jump to a conclusion about how much you hate pancakes and syrup, which I find that hard to believe because who doesn't like pancakes? I mean, come on. But I don't control that. It's not the mayor. It's not the city. It really comes down to businesses wanting to come here and be within zoning. Trust me, I want other things too. With that being said, I hear a lot about Aladdin's. Where's Aladdin's? What happened to Aladdin's? They are still in the mix, but the problem is we have this thing going on in society right now where all the cost of materials are through the roof. They are paused. They are not gone. They have not stopped. They are paused. Same thing with the Callisters and the Five Guys that was proposed. So all those things are still in the mix. I hope to God that they still come, but they're paused for the moment. I'm still working with them. Believe me, I call darn near weekly to the property owner and say, well, what's going on with Aladdin's? And I keep getting, they're paused. So I think he's getting a little irritated at me calling them, but the thing I want to point out is I hear you. I hear you, public. I hear what you're saying. I'm trying my best to get other entities in here. I'm doing what I can, so please be patient with that. With that being said, I went to the grand opening of Peak Nano on Wednesday. If you don't know what Peak Nano is, it's an amazing business that came into our community. I'm going to give a little bit of a technical term that they use. Not everyone may know what this is, but they do nano-layered films. And while I was there, a gentleman held up a piece of this, what looked like a Ziploc bag, and he goes, there's 7,000 layers in here that has some type of refraction that works into a lens, and there's so many different technologies that there were. works into a lens, and there's so many different technologies that they're working on, that this is such an innovation, that I think this is going to be a huge, huge success in our community. They're very excited to be here. A lot of them came from Texas. The irony is, they had, it was all red inside, and they said, yeah, we're red, it's Peak Nano. I said, no, that's scarlet, you know, you're in Buckeye country, so I got a good chuckle out of that. But they're an amazing business coming around, and they have this clean room there, but I know they spent oodles and oodles of money to get this business off and running, but the technologies that they're working on can relate to a lot of different things, which they talked a lot about, like the Tesla, I forget what the, what are the motors called in the Tesla?
Capacitors.
Capacitors, thank you, Julie. That how they can incorporate their technology into the capacitors of electric vehicles, and how that they're coming up with this new technology that will relate to that, and there's all kinds of studies with it, and a lot of folks are engaging with them. So it's a very exciting business to have in town. Currently, I think they have 60 employees. They anticipate within the next couple of years to have 300, 300 employees. So it's a great business to have. They're in a nice space on Rolandhold Parkway. If you have an opportunity to look them up online, I would strongly suggest you do that because it's an amazing business, and I'm very excited to have them in our community, and I'm excited to see the things that they come up with. There's a lot of military applications they do too. The one thing they talked about was binoculars, how, you know, normally you could see 50 feet away, with these you could see like 1,000 feet. I don't remember the exact numbers, and it gives a wide panoramic view too. So there's a lot of military contracts they're working with too, so pretty excited to have them. That's really neat stuff, and for those that got to go see it, I think that was well worth their time. The senior center is back open. We had a little delay. I was very excited Wednesday to go down and see my friends, and I think they were somewhat excited to see me because I have not seen them, and how long has it been, Chief Ripley, a year and a half?
March.
March. So it's been quite some time, and it's so nice to have them back in this building and have them here to have their hot lunches and the socialize, and to see the joy in their faces was amazing. So I'm so happy to have them back, and I know tomorrow they're going to be here, and I'm going to make darn sure I get down there to say hello to my Friday senior friends because if I don't sit at a certain table, it's like high school, they get very upset with me. So I make my rounds to all of them, and again, I'm very happy to have them back in the building and having lunch with them. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted, put the phones down, and drive the car. Next up is committee reports.
Parks and Rec Committee, we were off in July. We'll be having our next meeting August 18th upstairs in the conference room at the Rec Center. I hope, and that's where we usually, oh, you haven't had one of those yet, have you?
I've never even sat in council before.
Right. Totally upstairs at the Rec Center at 6:00 on August 18th, and it sounds like we have a lot of good news to look forward to. And that's the end of my report.
The cemetery, Northfield Mass. Cemetery, we've been applying, we will be applying for funding for the cemetery road. It's not considered a driveway, it's considered a road. If it's approved, approval wouldn't come until, we believe, February, and then the actual paving of that entire road would be done next year. We're also looking at the water in the cemetery for those people who come and use the tap. We only have a couple. We've talked about they have to be repaired. One of them actually has a little bit of a leak. It's turned off, when it's turned off, it turns off the water to the building. So it not only turns off to the water to the public, it turns off the water to the building. We're discussing the factor that what we may do is when the road's done, right now it runs only in about four different spots in the cemetery, so depending on where your grave site is, you may have to carry it quite a bit. We've talked about doing more like other cemeteries where the water taps are next to the road. That way you could pull it up and drive down by your cemetery plot and water. So that is a project that is just beginning to be reviewed. Obviously, it'll be very busy making, for the first time we get together, live. There are trees. I've requested assistance from City Arbors, Mr. Thrum, to work with our administrator, Mr. Snell. If you have family in there and realize that they've gone in there, those trees are ancient. They're very old. We've had several where the branches have come down. Luckily, they have not damaged the actual tombstone, but they have landed on the tombstone solar pathing. The arbors will be working to put together a plan of which trees stay, which trees grow, what kind of trees we'd be planting for the future, because you hate to take down a hundred-some-year-old tree because of the ambiance and the look. And when you're standing in the cemetery, you know, you like that, but at the same time, we're worried about the people who come to visit the grave sites, as well as the grave site itself. The other thing is, if you have family there, we've had a couple that we looked at, the bushes are overgrown. If you plant a bushes on your plot, you're responsible for them. Some of them have grown so large, you can't even see the headstone. So we will be notifying all the families who would have bushes that are overgrown, ask them to please come and either trim them, or we may have to wind up prelooping them. And some of them are just gorgeous, which is their key. The other thing we're going to take a look at is, if you've been in the cemetery, you know that it was part of the United States. Behind it is a ravine, so we're looking at what are we going to do with the erosion? At some point, we've got to take care of, there are several grave sites that are coming pretty close to the ravine because it keeps eroding, so we're also going to take a look at that. And we're having, our maintenance superintendent will be renovating the bathroom that they use. You don't want to see it now. It's interesting. She'll say, actually, it has a shower, and we're kind of surprised. Why does it have a shower? So a lot of work's being done on there. If you have taken a chance and taken a look, we have the website up, we have the linkage to the graves so that you can look and search for someone. If you've never been there, we have the memorial for the war veterans, but at the same time, the one section is the original settlers of this community. We're talking very old, all the way to current. End of report. We'll be getting together again to do our budget for 2022. One of the things that we already passed as councilwoman at the end of the meeting, there is no increase in assessment to the communities, for communities Northfield Village, Northfield Center, Saturday, and the House of Congress. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go into department reports, and forgive me, directors, chiefs, and commissioner, but I'm going to start in the beginning in the single file line and go down like we always used to, as opposed to the output of order. And I got to put the most pressure on the new guy, Director Kares.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity. Long to be the Service Director for City of Macedonia, working with you all and the residents of Macedonia. Oh, my name is Leon Kares. I come from the City of Independence. I live in Aurora, I was a former Service Director of Independence, and again, I'm happy to be here. I've only been here for nine days, so I don't have, I'm still trying to get a lay of land. My reports can be very short. I have a service department that's completed Stormwater Culvert Ditching Project on Ledge Road. We replaced 90 driveway culverts, and we continue with roadside mowing along Route 8, South Freeway Drive, North Freeway Drive, Valley View, and Park Avenue and Highland Road as well. Next month, I anticipate, we will be mowing. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for getting Ledge Road done. That's, I think that's probably our steepest hill in town, right?
Yes.
And that was a daunting task, especially when you're trying to perform traffic control on that hill. So I know they did a great job over there, and thank God we did it safely, and I'm very proud of the work that they did over there. So make sure you thank them on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the rest of council, that was a big deal.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will thank them.
Thank you. Director Gilati.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, Leon. Looking forward to working with you, and certainly help you get acclimated here as you get started. One piece of good news here for the city, the city was recently awarded a grant from Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the repainting of Highland Road. That's the stretch between Valley View Road and Chamberlain Road, three-lane road, a lot of heavy industrial use over there. The grant is in the amount of $415,000. That represents 53% of the total cost needed for the project, and that project will now be scheduled for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you for your help in getting that, that's a big deal. Appreciate that. Director Chata.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really nice to actually see everyone's faces here. This is the first council meeting I've actually sat in, so I feel like Director Kares, like this is my first one all over again. I'd like to start with talking about the LED lighting project that Director Varis had mentioned earlier. That did just get completed this week as they put in the final motion sensors, so we are all set at the rec center. It's been a beautiful experience to go through because now we can see everything in the rec, both during the day and at night. I would like to thank Director Kares and Supervisor Zernak for joining me in a building maintenance review that we conducted earlier this week. We're going to put together a, I would say up to a five-year plan of maintenance repairs that need done throughout the facility. Some of those will start more immediately, and some of them, obviously some of the bigger projects with RTUs and some different things are going to take a couple more years to get completed. That's a 21-year-old building that is in desperate need of some upgrading. So we got that rolling, and I really want to thank those guys for helping me out and helping get us directed. August 16th, we will have our rec center shutdown week, and we will actually be going through a two-week construction project for our parking lot. The parking lot will be being repaved, and that will take place for the whole two-week period. The first week, the week of August 16th, the rec center will be shut down for our annual maintenance week. The second week will be August 23rd. We will be open that week, and we will have a modified entrance to the facility similar to what we do for Summer Fest. So we will have a golf cart transporting people back and forth from the parking lot at Longwood Park Baseball Fields. I'd like to announce that we have completed one of the hires for our restructure project that we had worked on earlier. We have a new recreation supervisor of facilities and membership. Her name is Kelly Russell. She joined us this week, so Monday was her very first day. It's been a welcome addition to the team, and it's going to really help us continue to build recreation into the future. And fall programming, wanted to announce that we have repartners with the Cleveland Browns, and we will be having junior Browns flag football this season. We're pretty excited about that. We got nice Cleveland Browns jerseys, and we have heard rumors of a couple Steelers fans coming in, so they will be wearing Browns jerseys to play football, so that'll be nice. We have that kicking off along with soccer, swim team, swim lessons, and this fall will also kick off our first softball program. So we are bringing softball to the City of Macedonia. And lastly, or I should say, second last, Director Gilati and I teamed up and did a walk-through with a couple of other people. We had John Doyle with us, and we had Aaron, who works with Director Gilati. They came through. We did a walk of all of our trails in Longwood Park and did some GIS mapping of those trails. We're really excited to see these maps and learn more about some of the park improvements we can make out there and how we can build out that project over the next couple of years. And then lastly, just wanted to announce a couple of events we have coming up. We're working on a Touch a Truck event that'll be August 12th from 5 to 8, and we're putting it together for September 18th, Fall Fest, which will be our craft beer and food truck festival. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
What is the date of that, Mr. Chata?
The date of which one?
The Craft Beer Fest.
So Fall Fest will be September 18th.
Thank you.
And we'll release the time on that soon. The only reason we haven't released the time yet is we're working with the vendors to make sure we have some synchronization because they're all coming into a pretty closed-off area. So we're just timing that out right now.
I think it's important to add too, the softball programs are for adult, there's a men's and a co-ed because I've seen quite a buzz going on with that on social media, so if you're interested in forming a team, it's macrec.com.
Macrec.com, correct.
Thank you. Director Varis.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of my reports included in the four pieces of legislation. I appreciate council support on those. And want to remind residents that our July 15 deadline, that is our normal deadline for the Macedonia income tax refund, was extended this year to August 16th because regional income tax extended their filing date by a month. So just wanted to remind residents to get their refunds in, and end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have a first here. Going back to the early '70s, I don't think we ever had three new department heads attend their first council meetings on the same night. So I'd like to welcome Leon, Jason, and Bob. Welcome to our team. I know we've had meetings. This was the first time I've ever met Jason. He's a little smaller than I envisioned, but okay. So anyway, coming back to, coming back to council, I looked back, and our last council meeting was March 12th of 2020. Since that time, the fire departments responded to, not including this month, 5,222 calls. How did this shutdown affect us? Well, we were overrun with COVID calls, but if you remember, in our teams' meetings, I talked about how it was good because calls for service were down. Our low month during that time was 232 calls for the month. Our high since then, last month, we did 408. So I mean, that, I think that says a lot. I also looked at total COVID-19 cases in Ordonee Hills area, could not break out because they did it by zip code. There's 3,020 in Ordonee Hills area, of which 206 were in congregate living facilities. So that tells you that, for round numbers' sakes, not rounding the way the mayor does, at about 2,800 calls, or 2,800 cases in the general population. So besides that, I just want to remind everyone that in Northfield Center, there is a road closure that started today. East Highland Road between Route 8 and Old 8 is closed for 120 days. I also received an email this afternoon from the Summit County engineer. They're going to be closing Twinsburg Road in about two weeks, for two weeks, for a culvert replacement, and that's going to occur between Walters and Old 8, or Charter Lake Estates. So those detours, in their email, they specifically stated, do not overlap, but I can only imagine for Mr. Finley.
You're not going to be able to leave your house.
Yeah, they're kind of funneling them one way. Five points is probably going to be difficult for the next four months, three months, so... But the other thing is, very happy to say, the kids we hired, the teenagers, our explorers at Flush Hydrants are all complete. The data has been turned over to Cleveland Water, so hopefully we'll be seeing their crews out repairing those that need to be repaired. Our guys have to come out and do some minor maintenance on some of them, but other than that, hydrants are all complete for yet another year. So, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Sure. Chief, I understand there's possibly a fundraiser for your department coming up soon?
Yes, I believe it's October 16th, and five of the six of you have something to do on October 16th, if you remember my conversation about a month ago, so we'll talk further. It's a Oktoberfest, I believe, at the Northfield VFW. And there'll be more information going out.
Chief Golden.[1682.13]
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we have a video Kyle's going to show. Police Department is in the process of having some cameras installed that are going to assist us with catching some criminals.
Those guys? I knew it!
There's no volume, Kyle. This is taken from mentors on Channel 19. You can find it on...
He hears it.
Plain and there. Basically, the cameras are purchased from Flock Safety. They're all over Cogga County. We're going to be the first, and Summit County have them installed. And it's a system that will capture the license plate, the rear license plate of vehicles coming into your town. We've got five up and running, or five installed today. Brian Schuman is working on getting power to the sixth. It's ironic that I sent an email to the gentleman I'm dealing with, Sam, over at Flock, and I said, it was about 9:35, I said, "The five that we have should be operational. They have power." And I got a call from Sergeant Glance at 4:30 that we needed to utilize the camera system to capture a picture of a vehicle involved in a theft from a vehicle at Walmart. So it took six hours for us to require the use of the camera system already. Wonderful technology. These are not cameras that are going to run your license plate or anything like that. These are going to capture the plate of your vehicle. It's going to run that vehicle through NCIC. It'll tell us if it's a stolen vehicle, if there's a wanted felon as the registered owner, or we can enter license plates in there from repeat offenders that come to some of our businesses and just steal all the time. So it's nothing to be concerned about. It's not, you know, capturing everybody and doing crazy things with it. I think it's going to be fantastic technology for us. A huge problem that we have is we get a description of a vehicle involved in a theft, and...
Sorry.
Well, man, that's, thank you. We have a description of the vehicle, a description of the driver, but we can't get the license plate. This is going to save us countless man-hours with giving us a picture of the vehicle, picture of the license plate, and a wonderful system. I've been looking for this system for probably the past 12 years or so, and finally, the technology has become available. The system is very intricate. You can say, "Show me white Fords that came down the commons," or whatever street we're talking about, and it will just select the white Fords. We can go by four-door, we can go by two-door. It's wonderful technology. So looking forward to utilizing it. So I don't know that they're up and running just yet. They have to do some system upgrades because they just came online, so we're looking forward to it.
So just to be clear, because I think there's going to be a lot of questions about this, and I want to have absolute clarity on this. The system looks for specific things, and it's not a system that's watching your speed, sending you tickets. That is not what this is at all, in one, no way whatsoever. All it simply does is if they know that there's, let's say, a stolen car, and, you know, whatever the license plate is, and that stolen car comes through town, it sends an alert to our police officers to keep us safe. If there's something they're looking for, like we've had those smashing grabs in town, and we know, like the chief said, it's a white four-door Ford, it will only look for those vehicles if we can identify where they're at in our community. So we're not watching you. We're not trying to be big brother. That's not the intent of this. Everything that this is about is keeping this community as safe as it possibly can stay.
Does that help with any other ones as well?
Yes. So if they know that they're looking for a red Ford Focus, that will pop up. If they know the license plate, it'll pop up. So this is a very, very technological system that's really going to help our police department to, again, keep us safe. We're not watching you. That's not the intent of it. There's not even the capability to watch you. It's not going to send you a ticket. I can't say that enough times because I'm anticipating that coming out of this. So I want to be very, very clear about that. It's to catch the bad guys when we know who they are. So I want to be crystal clear. Chief, did we hit everything on that?
The cost is about $12,500, I believe.
Well, $2,500 a year for each camera.
One of the good things is anybody who has this system shares the information with everybody else who has this system. And we had a bank robbery eight months ago-ish or something like that. We knew the vehicle. We knew the license plate. We reached out to somebody we knew in Westlake who ran the plate through the Flock system, gave us some information, tracked down the vehicle. We found out where it was, and they were captured in Westlake because of the Flock system. So everybody who has this system is going to share that information. So it's not just a benefit for us, but the other communities will profit from it. And I believe Northfield just got two. So Chief Johns August came down, saw what it was about, and talked to his mayor, and he had to have them. Before ours were even installed, he saw them operational, so...
That's the big piece, too, we can communicate with the other communities. And what's it called? The Waka Flocka? What's it called?
It's called Flock Safety.
So, you know, we can track things and do a lot better job of finding them. So I think the communication with the other communities is huge. So if we know the bad guys, like the bank robber you referenced, you know, I know we were going to the other businesses and trying to get camera angles and views and trying to see where they were at. Now it's instant. So bad guys, you're picking the wrong town. Don't come here. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR's been pretty busy since the last time we met with council. We're working on several projects. One of the projects that we're working on is our safety policy and procedure manual. We're looking at updating and making revisions to bring our policies and our procedures into compliance with both PERF and OSHA. We have set a draft of it to our legal department for review, and then as part of that update, once we're done, we're using that and working with IT to prepare our upcoming 2021 training for both safety and drug-free workplace, which is also required under PERF and the BWC. Unfortunately, we're still having trouble getting meetings or trainers face-to-face. So our training will again be online for 2021. Over the next several weeks, we also intend on reviewing our employee handbook and procedure manual and our job descriptions. So stay tuned. End of report.
And I got to give you a big thanks because Director Smith has been working her tail off the past several weeks, getting this stuff prepared. And oh, yeah, big thank you for that because I know you put in a lot of hours outside of the office. So thank you. Commissioner Roddick.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to my report, I'd like to thank Mayor Rollinar and for my appointment and City Council for confirming the appointment. I'm very fortunate to be given the opportunity to serve for the city that I live in at this stage in my career. Thank you very much. The city will be embarking on a sidewalk program this year. The program's going to be voluntary. Mayor Rollinar had asked me to go ahead and conduct a study of the sidewalks and make note of those that I found in disrepair. Most of the disrepair occurred to the blocks over a period of time that have adjoining blocks that have a height differential. So I chose an area to concentrate on, and that was from East Aurora Road to Shepherd Hills Boulevard and Shepherd Road to North Bedford Road. And I went through the streets, and I was observing the blocks. And the ones that I selected, I actually created a criteria of one and a half inches between the adjoining blocks as a manageable amount to go ahead and take care of a program. Anything less might have created too much work, and it would have left it to be not manageable. And it being a voluntary program, you wanted to go ahead and hit the real problem areas as you went forward. So what I plan on doing at this point in time, as I've made note of the about 80 properties that are going to be affected by this, probably about 4,500 square foot of walk, over the course of this next week, I plan on actually marking those areas of disrepair. So if you happen to get calls from your constituents, those areas will be marked on. I plan on having a letter to all of the people who are affected by this, and I'm going to indicate to them that the program, again, is voluntary. And as a courtesy to them, I actually vetted a number of contractors. I'm going to give those contractors names and phone numbers to them. Their contractors will be registered by the city for their protection and for the city's protection. But of course, they can do the work on their own, or they can hire their own contractor. The only criteria that we would have for their contract, that they would become registered with us. The contractors that I've talked to, any work that they would do, they will advise the building department of that, and we will actually create a permit that would be a no-charge permit, but it would keep a record of what walk was repaired during this program. And there is no timeframe, and being voluntary, there are no consequences at the very end of the program. People could just continue to do this. And when you're starting a program that's never been instituted before, you want to find a way to make it, you want to make it work, you want to see how well it will work under certain conditions, and you tend to want to make that the softest conditions. I have been a part of mandatory sidewalk programs in the past, and we really need to probably look into setting a higher degree of criteria and in a mandatory way, allowing these blocks to either be repaired in a specific period of time or have them repaired by the city. But you need the budget for that type of thing if you're going to go through with that. So that's something to look for in the future. I do want to thank Mr. Gedetti and Mr. Terati for their assistance and insight as I put this program together. That's all I have.
I have to ask one question. If the sidewalk has been created due to the sewer, is the residence still viable for it, or do we get assistance from the sewer district? I can pick a two. One on my street, which is in Berchire, that totally sunk. The manholes here, and on Shepherd Hills, there are a lot of manholes in the sidewalk.
Yes, there's usually two things that create problems with sidewalks. There are appurtenances like manholes and inlet basins and valves, and tree roots would be the other one. But those are the two things that are the biggest variable. I think as we would move forward, as far as any type of assistance for that, we would have to, we'll probably have to discuss that, see if the people actually want to do the work.
I look for an update because you're doing Shepherd Hills, correct?
Shepherd Hills is on that list, yes.
The manholes, that street was built, so the manholes are actually, some of them are in the sidewalk.
Yep. Yeah, I actually take my walks in that neighborhood, so I kind of knew already where some of the bad areas were.
And I can hear him saying, "Right away, that's not, what do I do with this? It's the sewer, it's causing it." The truth, I get, some of the perspective we get on that is the city put in a lot of trees when the developments were developed in the tree lots. So it's going to be, I didn't plant that. The city did. They have a super program that started, again, multiple years ago. Just wanted you to be aware of some of the comments you made there.
I'm actually prepared to answer those questions, yes.
Thank you.
Sure. We've talked about this program in the past, and I think it even appeared in the news leader. So I'm wondering, is the opportunity to take advantage of these negotiated rates with the contractors going to be limited to that area that you described between Shepherd and North Bedford, or is it going to be citywide?
No, the, we're going to, that, those opportunities would be made available to anybody that would actually contact us.
Okay, good.
But I wanted to include that in the letter, which is not going to notice, but in that letter as a courtesy to the people that we were directly affecting. But anybody who were not directly affecting, if they want to get involved, we would help them to the greatest extent.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gedetti.
I have no reports, sir, other than I'll just note regarding the sidewalk program. Yeah, the program's new. It's voluntary this year, but it's pursuant to a codified ordinance that we've had locally for decades. So the obligation is on the individual homeowners, and it's always been that way to maintain the sidewalk, whether it's from a tree, somebody, you know, making some adjustments from a utility perspective. That obligation has always been on the homeowner.
Thank you. All right, any unfinished business?
Mayor, do you want Kyle to come out of his...
Oh, I didn't see him. Dr. Collins, do you have anything?
DIT Department closed 42 tickets. Working on setting up a new OSHA training system with Annette. Wanted to thank Vegas for helping. She's the intern in the finance department. She was setting up some quizzes for me. We've cut over the Sportsman's System to a cloud-based system, so that's what Jason uses to run the rec center. That will allow us to expand and offer more services in the park, hopefully concession stand and things like that. Moving forward with selecting a vendor for the new website, as well as, if you hear me in there talking, we are live streaming tonight's meeting. End of report. Thank you. Oh, and welcome to the three new directors.
Thank you.
Back in your home.
Just so everyone knows, I am working on trying to get our director's bench extended, but matching the veneer from 1996 is not an easy task.
We could have a guest director. Once a meeting, one of you guys lucky folks could sit up here in our extra chair.
I was just thinking...
The three new guys, just saying.
Employee of the week.
Yeah, there you go.
Doesn't Chip have some of this veneer stored somewhere?
I was thinking someone in a barn somewhere's got that veneer, so they might get lucky. You never know. All right, any unfinished business?
One quick thing with the road program. We've had numerous residents concerned about when their road will be done, and why is a higher number of road that's on the list? Mr. Gedetti, and I've heard spoken about this. I've had numerous calls and visits from people. Why is the road that's a higher number down before my road, which is a lower number? I just thought it might be easiest if we have a professional engineer give you an explanation that everyone can see instead of mine giving it to one person and then another and another. So, and the list is being updated. But Joe, could you please explain it to the public in here, direct from you?
Yeah, sure. I can try to do that here on the spot. And you're right, we've had these discussions in the past. Of course, we rate the roads citywide, put them in order, a nice report that everybody likes. But that is not necessarily, it's a little bit irresponsible. It's not great planning to just simply put on the blinders and go right down the list in order. There's many factors that go into how we decide from year to year which roads to pave. You know, sometimes it's geography, sometimes it's grant funding, sometimes we need to line up paving roads with other utility projects that might occur, water main replacements, sewer projects, et cetera. Probably a few other reasons I'm not thinking of right off the top of my head. But that's the general gist of it, and certainly, if need, you know, we can discuss further, answer the question again, put it, you know, in writing as we've done before.
Thank you.
Any new business?
I have two things. Real quick. One, we do have a council meeting on August 12th, but the August 22nd meeting is canceled because it's prior to, or 26th is prior to Labor Day. Starting in September, we'll do it with the second meeting on September 23rd. We'll be doing the council business hour again. We'll start alphabetically, just to make it easy. So that'll be on the 23rd. A counselor, and we'll go alphabetically, will be in the council workroom that if you want to have a discussion with them one-on-one, bring up some ideas, concerns, we'll have someone every meeting thereafter. Obviously, we haven't done it because of what's been going on. So we'll start that, but we'll do it in September. We don't have another mandate from now, unfortunately, what's going on in the world. Second of all, no, I actually have three things. You may have seen him on TV. You may have not. If you've watched the council meetings, or you didn't. We'd like to officially welcome John Hoover as our clerk of council. He has been here for several months now, but it's all been remote. And as I teased, all of council tonight, you've got to pay attention because there's no way to, you know, mute your phone or blank the screen. But I want to welcome him officially as our clerk of council. He's been doing a heck of a job. We really appreciate that. I've never seen him dressed professional, so we're really impressed. But welcome on behalf of all of council.
Thank you.
And last, but definitely not least, Director Chadak mentioned the Macedonia soccer. I'm going to take a moment. The sign-ups are in progress. It's a fun sport. If you've never played it, I tried it as an adult. Holy mackerel. What was I thinking? But it's been here since, and I was trying to remember, it's either 1990 or 1991, because Patrick was real little, my youngest. And I want to thank Jan Hauser, who was a rector at that point in time, who said, "Sure, Jan, let's start this." And here we are, all these years later, and it's still running strong. The young ones play on the fields here. The older ones are, and we did this, too, in that day and age, playing in suburban links. So we didn't have enough 12s and 14s to get together, you know, to help internally. Also, to all those who coached it, all those who refereed it, all those parents... Also, to all those who coached it, all those who refereed it, all those parents. We got involved because when we moved to New Jersey, I wanted to put our little ones into T-ball. They didn't have T-ball. They had soccer then. So when we moved back here, they didn't want to play T-ball. They wanted to play soccer. We didn't have soccer. So it's been this natural evolution. I didn't know if it would last this long. I've been here for 10 years, and I want to thank the Slazabs who took it over, kept it going, and working with the various directors of the parks. And I appreciate, Mr. Chatack, that you're continuing the tradition. I would encourage anybody, if your child's never played it, it's okay. When they're under eight, they'll go to kick the ball, and then they'll go, yeah, there's a butterfly. That's okay. That's okay. As a coach, a referee, and the organizer, it's an awesome way. We've had a lot of kids continue to play it in high school. I know one who played it in college. It's a great sport. I encourage you, get your kids out and do it. We now have their own little fields on the end of the side of the street. But thank you, Mr. Chatack, for continuing. I realize this probably... That's how you hold. Thank you.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to, once again, thank Mr. Wallenhorst for volunteering to be on the planning commission, and also welcome Mr. Hoover and the directors and commissioner for whom this is your first meeting. Everyone did good. Nobody fell out of their chairs. Nobody accidentally screamed something. These are things that scare me when I come to meetings. So I'm glad we're all cool. We're all good. And it's nice to see everyone in person again. So I'm looking forward to seeing you in August.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Thank you, Mayor. Getting the official that we can come back and be live, we've been counting until now.
It was never up to me. I want to be crystal clear about that, too. That was never, ever my choice.
We had a plan how to do it six feet apart, but we're gonna have council boards just spread everywhere. So, thank you.
Any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Mr. Hoover?